I can all have another one. I need one to go.
All right. It is seven o'clock. We'll call the February 7th council meeting to order and we'll start with roll call.
Lane.
Here.
Daniels.
Here.
Honomichael.
Here.
Ritter. Appleton. Murdock.
Here.
Okay. Will you all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Our first item tonight is our consent agenda. We have approval of the minutes from our council meeting of January 17th and approval of pay ordinance number 847.
I make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any discussion? Not roll call.
Honomichael.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Okay, we now have approval of pay ordinance 847A.
I make a motion we approve pay ordinance 847A.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Honomichael.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Okay. Call to public. Anyone wish to address the council tonight? No, okay. Old business, we have none. New business, consider lease for Park Department tractor.
Yes, council. This is an item that's in our vehicle and equipment replacement schedule this year. We budgeted for this last year. The Parks Department makes quite a bit of use of 2003 Kubota tractor. They've taken really good care of that. It's just kind of, it's a really essential tool for their, just year round, they use that. 2003 unit is in need of replacement, so we obtained price proposals for a new John Deere unit, and this one will come from Heritage Tractor in Lawrence. That's what it's going to look like. It'll have a, current tractor does not have a cab on it, so this one will have a cab, heat and AC, that'll just make a lot of things possible that weren't possible before. We have budgeted $4,900 in this year's budget, and we'll need to continue that because this is actually a five-year lease, so the $4,900 we budgeted was a one-year lease payment. The payment terms that we have in front of you are about $6,000, so $1,100 more than we had expected. The, most of the difference is the snow blade attachment for the front, and Jay came to me, it's good timing, on a day like this, came to me over the fall and indicated that on occasions when we have big snow events, the street department is out plowing the streets to get the, the public thoroughfares clear, and the city hall parking lot is sometimes last on that list, and we don't really want to pull the public works guys away from that. So with a blade on this, we're going to be able to clear our, the parking lot here at this building, just, you know, with Jay's crew and with his equipment. In addition to that, in exchange for that, I made Jay aware that he's going to be taking on the responsibility to clear the snow off the sidewalk along Lexington Avenue. That, that rec path is historically been the one sidewalk in town that we will go out and plow. And I'll actually, Andy Everett that lives on Penner Avenue, I don't know how many of you know Andy, he has a snow, snow removal business, and he has been doing a good portion of that. He'll, he'll do the sidewalk along Penner Avenue and in front of the, the junior high and some of the Lexington Avenue sidewalk if it hasn't been done, just out of the goodness of his heart. So hopefully take that burden off of, off of him to do this. So that's the story. That's, that's what the machine will look like. I didn't get a picture of the snow blade attachment, but it's, it's, it'll be a hydraulic thing where we'll be able to sit in the cab and do all that work. So in terms of a motion tonight, I need your approval authorizing the proposal from Heritage Tractor. The Heritage Tractor pricing was actually done through the statewide purchasing pool. The way that works is all bidders and vendors submit discount percentages to the state off of their regular pricing. So for this piece of equipment, the discount is eighteen and a half percent, so that's what they're giving to us in this price proposal. So I need your approval to accept that five-year lease and the annual amount of $6,048.90.
Questions?
Danny?
Thank you. On the, will this one be able to use that turf machine?
The tiller?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the same hydraulic three-point hitch on the back.
Oh, okay.
It's pretty universal.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, all, all, we have a box blade attachment, some other attachments that, that'll...
That will go.
It's the same as the old tractor.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah, question, Mike. You mentioned in here potentially recovering some value out of the Kubota at auction. Do you have any feel for its value, particularly its value relative to the $1,150 that's kind of over budgeting?
Um, no, we, we really don't. You know, typically, things like that, they'll go for a couple thousand. We're expecting kind of probably a couple grand, but there's really no way to, we can put a reserve on it.
So we might be able to recoup half or so of what's over budget via...
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, I would think. I would think easily half, easily. I would think we could recover that, but it'd only be for this year.
Right.
Of course. I was going to bring up before we get off the issue after the motion, our intent to...
Surplus?
Yeah, surplus these other items on that Purple Wave.
We'll follow up with that once we handle the motion and vote on the tractor. Any other questions for Mike? A motion?
I'll make a motion. We authorize, Mike took us up the proposal from Heritage Tractor for the five-year lease for the Baco in the amount of $6,048.90 annually.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any discussion? Not roll call, please.
Lane.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Honomichael.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Okay.
So, yeah, about the, the auction, we've done this before on a couple of pieces of equipment. We, we have, in addition to the Kubota tractor, we have six other separate pieces, and that last page of this staff report, Ron Kreisens listed those for you. There's a, there's a dump truck, there's a, there's an older tractor, a rotary mower, air compressor, and a couple of other bumper jack and storage tank. We want to list those on this online auction called Purple Wave. I don't know if anybody, if you're familiar with that, but it's very widely used by other municipalities and counties in the region who both want to purchase used items and, and want to get rid of them. It's a public bidding process. We can put minimums on, we probably would put minimums on some of these, but we'd like, you know, I don't know, just from a policy standpoint, if we need a particular motion or approval from you, but I wanted you to be aware that that's what we're doing. So any proceeds that go, come from that, go back into the equipment replacement budget.
Okay.
So we do intend to place those items that you see on that list, plus the Kubota tractor on that site.
Any questions regarding the surplus equipment, surplus items? Okay, good. Thank you. 4B, consider final plat for Arcadian Estates.
All right, thank you, mayor and council. Before you have is the final step for getting Arcadian Estates to a point where it can be, lots can be sold and developed. It's the final plat, which then, of course, will be filed with the county, and then, and then sales can occur of the property. We've gone through this process. This started in January, actually with the annexation, rezoning and annexation, which it was rezoned a rural suburban. Preliminary plat was approved in October of 2018. Final plat has also been through the planning commission. Each of these steps, of course, has been through staff review. We do have the applicant here tonight, if you would like to ask them of any questions. Pretty straightforward at this point. There is utility easements, there's a pedestrian easement to the north, also a drainage easement as well that will encompass for the detention requirements. Of course, the conduit for the fiber, this doesn't appear on the final plat, that is part of the development agreement that was signed with the applicant in early 2018. We went through all the sort of standard review that staff does, and also went through it with the planning commission. If anyone has questions, I will take those now, and I said the applicant is here.
Any questions regarding the Arcadian Estates plat?
I, I had just one question, and I think I had asked Rick about this, but he wasn't sure either. The sidewalks, there will be sidewalks on here, do they just not have to show on this plat?
Yeah, they don't need to. They're on the preliminary plat.
They're just on, there are other things, okay.
And you're talking about the interior.
Interior sidewalks. That's, that was my only question, it was whether they had to be, if they were typically on something like this, but I didn't.
Yeah, they're shown on the preliminary.
Yeah, kind of on a similar topic, I was happy to see that we've got a dedicated pedestrian easement shown along Waverly.
Yep.
Yeah, that's kind of a... Mike, do you know, is the, the traveled way of Waverly centered on the section line?
Um...
Because, and is the right-of-way symmetric?
Right-of-way is symmetrical.
So there's 50 feet on either side?
Let's just see.
Well, it's not all platted though, right? The first...
It's not platted on the, on the east. Not that it changes the plat, I'm just curious.
No.
Notice the 50-foot of right-of-way.
I thought there was a symmetrical 40.
Huh?
I thought there was a symmetrical 40 existing now, before, let me, I don't know why these outlines aren't pulling up.
But there's no additional right-of-way for Waverly being dedicated by this plat, correct?
The plat...
Not right-of-way. I mean, there's the right-of-way, of course, within, but as far as on Waverly.
Right.
Show 50-foot existing, so.
From center.
Yeah, but we do have the...
From section line.
From section line.
Right.
Why is that not, I'll have to refresh this. Just bear with me, we need to find this out. Yeah, so it's not a symmetrical. I think there was a symmetrical 40? So that, yeah, so there, there, I'm sorry, there's 20 feet east of the section line and 50 feet west.
Okay.
Because this was planted, this is...
Right.
Was originally planted.
Right.
So, no, there's a total of 70, it's not symmetrical. But Waverly is, does appear to be roughly on the section line.
Should be, I mean, I don't know why.
Yeah. And it's jointly, it's a joint maintenance or a joint maintenance agreement with the county?
Well, so, yeah. This is one of those we've traded with the county for some other spot. Now, this is, of course, the west side is in the city now, wasn't before, but we were taking care of that whole stretch in exchange for, I think, another section out on Sunflower Road.
Okay.
It was one of the gentleman's agreements things. We've never formalized that. But now we've got city limits on this side, this parcel is still in the county, and of course all this in the city.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
I asked, I asked at the planning commission, sort of, the conduits, now that RG Fiber, they're going to stay with the two-inch, or are they going to go with the micro conduit like RG's laying?
Well, I guess our development agreement is with two-inch. I think we decided we're going to, that's what the development agreement calls for, so that's what we're going to do.
Yeah, it is, and it was. So the, and that's what, we talked about that at the planning commission level. The, the issue is RG is not going to extend seven-way micro ducts up into the neighborhoods necessarily. They might be an inch and a half, it might be a two-way micro duct. We just don't know what that's going to be.
So the seven micro ducts, pretty much for their main backbone.
That's kind of backbone stuff.
And so the two ducts should still work in the neighborhood?
It'll work.
Because you can run access fiber in those.
Right, right. And so, yeah, that's, that's...
It still fits.
Yeah.
Still works, yeah.
Motion then, or any, there's no more questions?
I'll make a motion, the city, that we accept the easements right-of-way for Arcadian Estates.
I'll second. Discussion, roll call.
Mayor Walker.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Honomichael.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. 4C, consider revisions to personnel policy relating to uniforms, work hours, and emergency work schedules.
Yes, council, you might remember when we talked about, when we adopted the overhaul of the policy manual in November, we talked about the fact that there were still details to work out on the uniform policies. We, we had a little subcommittee trying to get to the bottom of that, department heads, working with employees, you know, throughout the last couple of months, looking at that in terms of budget and just practicality. So we've come up with a solution, I think is going to work really well. Essentially on the uniform side, we currently have a contract with a provider that provides uniform shirts and uniform pants to all the uniformed employees in the city currently. There's like, I think there's, they give us 10 or 15 shirts and a similar amount of pants, and then they launder them and run them back for wear. Those aren't, those items aren't terribly popular with the people who wear the uniforms. They're not very comfortable, and, and, you know, so, so we get marginally use of those. What we decided to do instead of that is actually purchasing from a single source, from a list of pre-approved items for every employee. We'll purchase those items for that employee, and then those are his or hers, and they do their own laundry. And when we started looking at the pricing to do that, and how long items last, and what we're paying for the existing contract, we can do the new plan for roughly the same amount that we've budgeted in 2019 for uniforms. So that's, that's the direction we're headed. So each employee, on a yearly basis, we're going to have to budget that uniform allowance. So for this year, we, we separated the groups of employees from uniformed and then non-uniformed, and then there's a category in the middle that's administrative uniforms. So all the uniformed employees are the ones in the, generally in the street, parks, and water departments. Non-uniformed employees are, everybody works up here at city hall. And then there's a category in the middle for our inspectors. So, you know, the inspectors are Steve and Cameron and Walter, who are, you know, about a third of their time is spent in an office setting, and two-thirds maybe out in the field on some day. So they're kind of a float between. So we thought they were in a little different scenario, a little different category. So for uniformed employees, the yearly budget allowance is $500. For non-uniformed employees, we threw in a budget allowance just to get some, like a collared, logoed shirt, you know, to wear in the office or to a meeting or to, when you're going somewhere to represent the city. Just get you a couple shirts, you know, every year. And then for that category in the middle, it's $300. Now, that's just for this year, and that'll keep us level with the budget on a uniform budget basis. So the new policy basically stipulates that, it identifies those three categories. We've got specific items that, you know, tops and bottoms, caps and winter wear. So in terms of looking uniformed, you know, we're going to, we're going to pick out, you know, some long-sleeved, short-sleeved shirts, some t-shirts, polos, crewnecks, hooded pullovers or hoodies. For the bottoms, we're going with blue jeans, this particular type of blue jeans, denim carpenter jeans, cargo shorts or pant shorts. And then caps, caps is a big deal. Caps is something that, that people are really, they really have strong feelings about caps. We've, a lot of guys just wear vendor caps around all the time. That's a pretty natural thing to do, but I think it's important just for uniformity to have just a city ball cap, you know, with the city logo on it. So we'll be providing those as well. Shorts was another thing. It's a pet peeve of mine. I don't like, you know, people wearing shorts when it's, when it's 30 degrees out. So we've got a provision that you only wear shorts if it's so hot that you need to wear shorts. Otherwise, no shorts. And department heads can override that. Ron in the street department, he doesn't want his guys wearing shorts ever. Steve's the same way with the inspectors. We don't think they need to be wearing shorts. Parks and Rec guys, a little different, you know, water department guys, maybe a little different. So we do have all that laid out. We do have some policies about uniform, the selection of the uniform. So we've got us one vendor, a selected list, and you can use your $500 or $300 allowance to select out of that list. We also provide winter wear, so the Carhartt pullovers and bib overalls for these guys who are going to be working out in the elements. We also understand that those Carhartts are going to last more than a couple of years, but maybe a t-shirt won't. You know, if you're using a t-shirt to work on a truck every day, maybe it doesn't. So that, that allow, uniform allowance tries to take that into account. We're going to wear name badges all the time. We've, we could start that a while ago, and we do reimburse for boots and shoes that, that uniformed employees wear while they're at work. So in your staff report, I've kind of just shown you a list of what we, this is the approved list and those dollar figures. So that kind of, that kind of rounds out the uniform discussion. In practice, we've been doing about a half of this already. If you, if you walk through city hall, if you see these guys out, you'll see them wearing hoodies with a Tostado logo on them. You'll see them wearing long-sleeved t-shirts, or you'll see some of this stuff already. So that's kind of a function of the practice that has been kind of evolving over time, away from the uniforms provided by the uniform company. So we'll start implementing this, and like I said, it's, you know, a lot of the employees have a lot of this already. So I don't, I don't anticipate we're going to be spending that whole 500 or 300 per employee this, this year. But this was something that, I mean, it did take quite a bit of discussion on staff level, and we wanted to make sure it's going to work for everybody.
Not to be too nitpicky, but under your short thing, I think I would reward it to say between Memorial Day and Labor Day, instead of Labor Day to Memorial Day, because that seems to be, you're allowing it.
Is that viewed the wrong way?
You're allowing it through the winter time and any day over 90 degrees, which is going to be most of the summer. So you're kind of allowing them to wear in 30 degrees.
I don't know.
The way I read it.
Memorial Day is first.
Yeah.
You're right. What session is that in?
V. DV. C9 DV. So you might just want that.
What in the heck? Nobody caught that?
Otherwise, it would be all year, almost.
It would be all year. And I'll tell you, the 90 degrees was a sticking point, too.
Yeah. Well, I do think the, the Park and Rec guys will appreciate it.
And while we're on the topic of minor typos.
Nitpicky?
Patrick found a few, I think, throughout the...
Not that one.
Oh, not on that. It's on the next one, so we'll all hand these out and we'll talk about it.
So is that budget a ongoing annual budget then?
It is, yeah. And it's, it's first throughout the departments, of course.
Yeah, I also, not to be nitpicky as well, but just a question, I presume, like on color choices, particularly for your people that are working outdoors, is there consideration for them to be safety colors, either, particularly with the t-shirts and whatnot, either orange or green?
So we, we do, anytime you're working in traffic, obviously, we require the, the traffic safety, bright orange stuff, reflectorized stuff. We do want to give a little bit of latitude on colors for the departments. Primarily, that comes up with the street department or water meter, reader. And, you know, the water department, too, when they're out in traffic. So if they're in traffic, it's, it's the whole OSHA-approved, reflectorized stuff. So that's, that's what we do.
All right.
Anything else on uniforms?
We would need a motion to...
Um, Patrick prepared one ordinance for both of these items, so maybe...
Okay, so we move on into the...
Resolution. I'm sorry, it's a resolution.
Yeah.
So it's all combined. The other item had to do with some emergency work hours, basically. This, this comes up, of course, recently with the snow, with the snow removal efforts. I wasn't aware when we, when we were working through hours of work with the overhaul, exactly what the practice was in terms of snow removal for Ron's crews specifically. So if he sees a storm approaching, not this one last night, but the previous one was, was supposed to start, you know, about six in the evening and go throughout the night. What he did in the morning was he said, okay, we're going to break into our 24-hour shifts. He sent half his crew home at noon that were, that crew was going to come in at midnight. The other half was going to work till midnight, and so then they were going to just rotate the 12-hour shifts. When he does that, his practice had been to pay for overtime, for any time anybody worked that's not, that's not in their normal shift. So those guys that came back in at six and worked till midnight the next morning, or guys that came in at midnight and worked till noon the next morning, most of that was overtime pay because they were outside the normal work hours. The other thing is that he would pay, continue to pay those people between noon and the end of their shift because he sent them home. So that was the other, that was the other practice that he'd, that he'd follow. So the overtime pay is regardless of whether or not an employee has reached 40 hours for the week. So that was just, that's overtime regardless. So essentially, that was the concept that, that, well, that was the practice. And so what we did to account for that is introduce the idea of normal work hours, and we've defined those for the administrative and Parks and Recs and Sewer and everybody else, and then we have an emergency work schedule. So we're defining that as, you know, something that's out of the ordinary, and this is, this doesn't count for the case where you're just working on a project and you got to stay a little bit late that day. That doesn't, that doesn't count. But if we have some big disaster, snowstorm's really the best event where we have to do that, then that is an emergency work schedule, and in that, in that event, employees are paid overtime for kind of off-hours work. So basically, that's, that's the idea behind that. The one I just passed out, Patrick had some typos mostly that he's highlighted on there. So if you, if you want to, and the, the stuff that's underlined, we're just not, we're just going to not underline that, the one and one-half stuff, we're just not going to underline that. So if you have any questions, I'll stop there.
Okay, questions for Mike on this policy?
What's a one-day snowstorm like we've been dealing with typically end up adding?
In terms of dollars?
Yeah.
If it's a one-day thing, we usually have three employees who it affects, so that would be working overtime, and that overtime, if it's a one-day thing, is six hours usually that they'd be paid time and a half. So six times three times maybe 10, you know, a couple hundred bucks.
And the materials or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, well, if you want to, if you want to put a dollar figure on snow removal, that's a whole other thing.
That's all another side.
We can do that, but, yeah, it's not, it's not a big impact. You know, this is taken care of in our, when we, we budget for overtime.
Budget, yeah.
So it's really not a budget thing. It really is a recognition that, it's kind of an appreciation for these guys, you know, that do this and that work throughout the night. And, you know, if they didn't have some of this, I would worry that they wouldn't be so motivated to, to fill in these gaps. They might not answer the phone when it rings and they're at home asleep. So it's kind of more of a recognition, recognition for them, appreciation that, you know, it's all part of the job, but it's still.
Any other questions?
Do we have a resolution number?
1005.
1005.
Yep.
I'll make a motion, we adopt resolution 1005?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lane.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Honomichael.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Motion carries, and I apologize, who made that motion?
Uh, that was Rod. Seconded by Lori.
Thank you.
Consider bids for the Sunflower Water Treatment Plant Lab and Offices Project.
All right, thank you, mayor and council. We are diligently moving through the 2015 bond issue. This is the last project that will be done at the water plant. We started with the demolition of a lot of the lime building outside, and there's a couple old structures out there as well. We've also spent a little bit of time with the street crews, regrading and cleaning things up out there. We're virtually done with the exterior improvements, which are, which is new siding, new windows, put a new rough roof on the lime storage part of the building, added some garage doors, also built a shed for the mower and some other equipment that the water plant operators store. And now we are working on getting bids, or we got bids for the interior renovations. What we're going to do is put in a new restroom, got a new office area for all the lab equipment and computer equipment, and then, and there's a smaller break room that's going to be part of this project as well. We had a pre-con meeting out there, it was well-attended by a lot of the contractors. As you can see, we did get five bids. We only got two bids for the exterior renovation, so I was happy that we got five bids for the interior work. So, I was happy that we got five bids for the interior work. So, you can see Mac Corporation out of Blue Springs was the low bidder. They're actually quite a bit, bit lower than, Combs was the incumbent. So, I thought they'd be a little bit more competitive bid. But one thing that Mac Corporation told me is we kind of bid this as a design build. We gave them the parameters that we wanted the contractors to follow, but gave them some leeway to make some changes as they saw fit. They will need to submit plans to our building official and goes, get those approved. So, they do need to develop an architectural plan. So, there will be that cost. And Mac Corporation has in-house architects and engineers. So, they felt that that was what sort of gave them the competitive advantage on this project. As you can see, we have about $40,000 left below the 2015 GO bond issuance. We've got a couple of smaller projects. We're going to potentially side some pump houses, some things like that. But we're essentially done with that bond issuance. I've asked for, in our recommendation, the bid price plus a 10% contingency to 191, 291. I think we need that contingency just because it's, you know, 1940s, 1950s construction. And sometimes, we're just going to run into some things that we just didn't anticipate. So, that's why we're asking for the total of 191, 291. With that, I will stand for any questions you may have.
Questions? You answered mine. I was concerned about the spread and you addressed that, so.
Is this something that will start right away? And how long do you expect it to take them to do this?
It's a 90-day project from the time the notice proceeds issue. It's really not a particularly big project. One of the problems that we have out there, of course, is the gated access and things like that. So, we'll have to coordinate with more of engineers to make sure that they're happy in the particular times that the contractors can come and work. It, we're hoping to have this wrapped up by this summer.
Any other questions?
Maybe, maybe in here I missed it. Is the contingency, you're, you're not contracting for that. We're just budgeting for that. Is that right?
That's correct.
We're contracting for the 173,901, but we're budgeting for 191, 291.
Anticipating potential changes.
And on the contingency, the practice has been if, if we have that allocated authorization, it would only be a change order from the, for the existing contract. This is not something, money that we could go spend for another contractor to do something else. Yeah.
And those change orders will come back to us as well, then?
Yeah, yeah. So, usually, as you know, during the project, it's something they have to have a decision on now. So, it, you know, could save them time without a remobilization. But the, the change orders do come back.
I'll make a motion when we award the project to Mac Corporation to complete the water plant interior renovation in an amount not to exceed $173,901 plus a 10% contingency of $17,390 for a total of $191,291.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to second and discussion, not roll call.
Murdoch.
Yes.
Hannah Michael.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Motion carries.
While you, before you get too far away, we, we talked about the water, the other building project.
Oh, yeah.
What, how's the progress on that one going?
Well, unfortunately, it's gone a little bit slower than, than we would like. The weather's had a big part of that. We had some, also some issues with contractor early. Steel's up and it's just not good. The steel framing is up. They still have to do siding, insulation. So, we're hoping once we can get the exterior completed, the roof, then they can, well, they won't have any excuses at this point. And we meet with them every two weeks and go through the project, get an updated schedule. So, we're pushing on them as hard as we can. But unfortunately, this last month and a half, the weather's.
Haven't been so good, right?
Been pretty poor.
Thank you, Brad. Discuss projects in amount for 2019 CIP bond issue.
Yes, Council. I've been talking with our financial advisors and bond counsel in anticipation of this bond issue that's been in our CIP. You know, the intent for this, originally, the CIP was for $900,000 in bond financing to pay roughly half of the 91st Street Extension project that we're about ready to bid. So, that's, that is still the plan. So, started to talk with them about that. And they've generated this schedule. Basically, it's a calendar for the bond issue that outlines who's responsible for what. The closing, according to this calendar, would be April 11th. So, that would work well for our construction sequencing. And by the time the contractor wants to, you know, pull for pay applications, that would work well to have that funding amount available by then. Wanted to talk to you a little bit because we've had some discussions about the potential of including some of the RG fiber payment in with a bond issue. And if you'll remember, when we did that, we were thinking maybe we could include that in this general obligation bond. Talking that over with our bond counsel, they don't think it's a good idea. The way that design-build pro, agreement is structured, it's not painfully clear to investors that that is a public infrastructure project and they're just building us conduits. And the conduit is, is in fact in the ground and we will own it. So, there's some, there's some nervousness about that. So, they advised not to include that in a, in a bigger issue because it might gum up the works for the bigger issue. You'll remember, last year, we did make a $300,000 payment. And we coded that to the 2018 contingency line item, which had $750,000 in that. Even with that expense, we ended 2018 with a general fund balance of 2.2 million, which is only slightly less than the 2.3 million we were projecting. So, my recommendation would be to allow that $300,000 to remain coded as an expense in 2018 and move on with our 2019 budgeting process. That leaves $200,000 that we still have to kind of decide about. That money won't be due until the first customer is hooked up, I believe is what the contract says. We think probably about the middle of the year is when that payment will be coming due. So, we can talk about that as we go through the 2020 budget, you know, how we, how we want, want to handle that expense. We don't need to decide on that tonight. Just wanted to bring to your attention that's not in this bond issue. The other thing that I thought made sense is to include the signal modifications project. That is, again, it's about on the same track as the 91st Street, maybe a little ahead. We'll be bidding it out real soon. $77,000 in this bond issue for that project is what I'm suggesting. Our total bonded need for projects is $908,000. The bond counsel includes with their underwriters discount, the cost of issuance, the total bond issue will be $995,000. That will generate the $908,000 that we need for projects. So, I wanted to just kind of make you aware that that's what we're working on, that that's what the amount will be. And that those two projects actually will be identified in that bond issue. According to the council, the calendar, I don't think it comes to the council until March, yeah, March 7. So, that's awful late in the process to be surprising you with this stuff. So, I wanted to make sure that you guys were all aware and that we are okay moving forward in this direction. So, if, if not, then there's still, there's time to adjust.
Questions for Mike on the bond issuance?
None?
Well, one that contingency you've got in here, how did you figure on that and the cost that you put there?
Well, you know, the, when you issue bonds, they, they encourage you to throw, you know, make sure you have enough to cover the project. So, when I, when I'm laying out there on page one of the staff report, the project cost, 91st Street, that 1.6 million, that's the current cost estimate from, from CFS. That includes its own contingency of probably about $100,000 bucks. The Lexington Commerce Signal, that's $77,000 includes, and by the way, both of those include the design fees. We've already, you know, we're already paying out. It also includes a contingency. And then, there's another contingency of 10% for the whole thing. Really, that is just to make sure that we issue enough bonds to do the projects and we're not short on the backend. The way these bonds are written, any proceeds that aren't used for projects go immediately to pay principal. So, whatever we have left over, it goes straight back.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And that's, that's pretty typical. You know, they, they really encourage you. I mean, I've seen 15 or 20% contingencies.
I didn't know that.
But if things go the other way, then you are value engineering or trying to.
Yeah.
Figure out other ways to fund the project so that you can go forward. If you don't, you know, if you don't plan for enough money upfront, it's.
Then you're in trouble.
Easier to go the other way than it is.
Okay, I understand more now. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
Well, thanks. We'll proceed then.
Good work.
Yeah, all right. We'll see you in March then, here.
And by then, we should have real numbers on our.
Yeah, we'll have bids.
Bid numbers on both of those projects, so we can feel better about the estimate. It will actually be.
Yeah.
Backed up by a bid.
Yeah.
All right. Moving on, discuss the summer concert series.
Summer concert series. Yeah, oops, I skipped over. Well, yeah, it shouldn't be too many surprises here. Wanted to get this back in front of you because we've talked about it internally, had another couple of staff meetings on it. And we've talked about it with the, the Parks Board, actually, Monday, Monday evening. We, we just kind of worked through the idea and, and the concept with the Parks Board. The outline, as we currently have it contemplated, is, is attached to the staff report. I don't, I don't know what's changed really since the last time we talked about it. You know, the schedule, every Friday in June, we're looking at an event time of two hours. And that's kind of based on pricing of some of these bands that we're, that we're looking at and what they typically see. We're hoping to draw between 1,000 and 1,500 people. It'll be a free concert. The vendors, we're reaching out to just a list of a dozen or so vendors in the area. We might have two things to account for. We might have the situation where so many vendors show up that none of them can really make any money. In which case, we may have to limit the number of vendors attending the event. But we also might have the case where no vendor wants to come out because they don't think it's profitable, in which case, we might have to pay, you know, guarantee a vendor some sort of a, some sort of a compensation for coming out. So, we probably need to account, be prepared for both situations. The other particulars, you know, about porta-potties and about trash containers and security lighting, all the, we'll get those worked out as we get closer to the, to the event. But I think with this, with this structure here, we've got plenty of information to really advertise and promote the events. And toward that end, Lori kind of put me in contact with the Director of the Johnson County, what is it, Cultural Division? Cultural Division. And I'm, I'm meeting with her next week to talk about how they can help within their system and promotion, getting the word out for our event. And maybe they'll have some, some ideas about how to, how to do that. What I, what I really wanted to discuss this evening was the selection of the bands. We have Matt Snook. He's already booked for the June 7th event. We have at least three other events that we need to kind of decide on bands for. It's time to get them, get them lined out. So, I'd like to hear.
Ready to tally.
Who's your, who's your first choice, second choice, so we can kind of head that direction?
Well, be, just as a, just for a couple of other ideas, I was talking to a friend of mine who's very music oriented and was going to listen to a band. And so, a couple of other names, in case anybody's ever heard of them, one is called the Instamatics. The Instamatics is led by Charlie, who used to be Charlie and the Stingrays.
Oh, yeah.
And they do 60s and 70s dance-type music, which made me think that'd be kind of fun to have a dance floor-ish situation when we have this, maybe. But anyway, and then the other one, he was opening for a group called KC Groove Therapy, which is another kind of a dan, dance one with random current dance and random pop hits. So, those are just a couple of their bands. And she also wanted me to make sure that we kind of understood that when you're going to contract with these, even though it seems like it's only a two-hour gig, it is their whole night is committed to it. So, don't try to think you're going to get good deals because it's a seven to nine type, not very long of a, you know what I mean?
You're paying for the whole.
You're going to pay for the whole night no matter what because they can't go do a different show that night. So, don't try to say, oh, it's just a couple-hour type thing, you know? Can you do it for a little cheaper? Because that's probably not going to work very well.
Okay.
So, anyway, but I do like the idea of having Land Rush, the local group.
I'm a solid vote for Land Rush.
Since I'm talking, I'll go and give you my advice first. And I also loved listening to The Four Chickens and a Coke at the city mayor's dinner. And so, I think they would be, if we could get them, they'd be a great group. Looking at the website of Diamond Empire, or maybe it was Cherry Bomb, one of those two seemed to be kind of a sim. No, it's Diamond Empire. They seem to be kind of a similar makeup of instruments and kind of a big band.
Bigger group.
Yeah, bigger group.
Some folk instruments.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, those two would be kind of, Four Chickens and a Coke is pretty bluesy, I think, wasn't it?
It's like Blues Brothers bass, a lot of blues.
So, you got a lot of blues there. Land Rush, you got a lot of just kind of everything. And then Matt Snook, you've got the country. So, you know, you've kind of got a good variety. So, I think the fourth, my choice on a fourth one wouldn't be anything too, you know, anything in particular other than trying to maybe not go as high as 3, 3,500 for Kelly Hunt, even though I really like her. Might be a little pricey. That's all I have to say. Sons of the Brazzillas, they're always really good at Wine Song. But I don't know if it would be a favorite for bringing a lot of family and crowd out, too. I don't know that. You know what I'm?
What are they, what are they?
They're kind of, they're kind of jazz, Latino jazz, Brazilian jazz, Brazilian jazz.
So, they were in the North Tent?
They weren't here this year.
This year, they were.
They've been every other year. This is their first year they weren't here.
The North Tent this year was Land Rush, right?
No, Land Rush was in the, the, the South Tent.
It's more east and west, though.
Yeah, I don't know. The one, the one closer to the boat ramp, that was just kind of a made-up one.
That was a thrown-together.
That was a thrown-together one.
Okay.
So, and then the other one was Land Rush.
All right.
Kevin, any thoughts?
Oh, it's, this is not in my wheelhouse. So, I'm going to trust all of y'all with, with, you know, good, good observations. I guess that my, my question was around promoting and making sure that we get the word out, making it successful. I like hearing that connection. And, you know, certainly, we want it to be a community event. I say certainly. I'm presuming certainly we want it to be a community event. But I'm curious then, you know, are we also trying to draw in from, you know, Shawnee, Lenexa, that area? And just thinking in terms of how we promote it, you know? Because one thing, you know, we're promoting it through flyers and whatnot at, at Harps or whatever and through local social media. But how much also are we trying to get it out in, in?
Who is, who are we doing, who's doing our advertising?
Well, we, that's what we're kind of maybe hoping Johnson County. So, with that being said, other than yourself, who is working on this project?
Just internally, yeah. So, it's kind of the apartment heads, myself, Lana, Jay, because of the Parks tie. And then Kathy Back, the court clerk, has expressed an interest. So, that's kind of been the group.
Okay. One idea would be to do a postcard, like an Every Door Direct postcard mailing to everybody, which makes it.
We talked about that at the.
Cause we've got the.
Parks Board.
Water bill, you know, we've got the city services database, right?
Well, yeah, you could, but you could do an Every Door Direct, which would be, is really easy, too. The Every Door Direct is, is postal route-based. So, if you wanted to extend it to, say, the people in, you know, the Lenexa area between K7 and here, there's three or four postal routes in that area. I'm very familiar with all the postal routes around. Cause I've done a lot of these mailings. So, and they're not really all that, I mean.
It's an affordable way to get.
It's affordable with a postcard. The postcards are all big ones. Which, you know, I think one thing that we ought to come up with, and maybe you guys can do this, although I already have an idea, we need a name for it. So, I'm, we're thinking, yeah, like River Fest Summer Concert Series. What do you think? Instead of DeSoto. And then it could be sponsored by the city of DeSoto. But I'm kind of liking, since they're going to be at River Fest Park, to use River Fest in the name. But anyway, coming up with some kind of little logo, you know, finding maybe somebody who can help us get a logo and get the name out so that, you know, it's something that's recognized and people start to see over and over, you know? Just like Wine Song, people know Wine Song by Wine Song, you know, you start to recognize it. But I don't think it has to be the City of DeSoto Concert Series. I think.
No.
I think our perk idea is
It may actually be a little limiting, even though, because we want to draw people here.
Right.
Yeah, like I said, this is out of my wheelhouse. I'm not going to get in and muddle around. I, I hope we can do a great job. I'm excited about the opportunity. I think it's, I think it could be a really cool community event. We'll see how it goes.
Woodstock, maybe. Woodstock on River Fest.
Woodstock on River Fest, there we go.
No, I was going to say, as far as music choices, I don't know a lot about any of them. So, I mean, Four Chickens and Coke, we heard the other day, and they were good. Land Rush, I've heard, but the rest of them, I'm totally unfamiliar with, so I kind of defer my votes on those. As far as getting the word out there and marketing it, I mean, the points pretty much have been made. So on a logo, that might be an area to tap into our high school and see what they can help with, or if they want to help. And that might draw some more community involvement.
Yeah, good point.
Danny, any thoughts?
Okay.
All right. I like, I concur with Lori on the two, definitely want to have Land Rush there if they're available, just because they're a community connection and, and they're a good band. And I'd really like, I like the Four Fried Chickens and a Coke, so that would be my next two. I'm not, other than the Sons of Brazil, I'm not, I have not heard the others, well, Kelly Hunt, but, so.
Well, the last thing would be the Fourth of July event. You know, we have a regular band that, that comes there, the Good Sam Club Band. And they've indicated that they'll do their regular thing at the Fourth of July as well. Just a question, do we want to, do we want another larger band at that event, or do we just want to leave that event?
I think, yeah, it's, it's, it's
I like the way it is.
They got their, they've been doing it for quite a while.
Okay.
Watch our lighting this year.
Well, the security lighting, yes, yeah, yeah. Fourth of July.
Down and not out.
We'll have it down. I mean, we'll have four chances to get that lighting right before the Fourth of July event.
Yeah, I, I mean, I was a little worried about the one guy with the rifle.
Yeah, shooting the light out.
Yeah, he was going to go ahead and shoot it out.
Not a good deal.
All right, is that enough for you? We haven't picked that fourth band, but
No, we'll, we'll kick it around.
Okay.
All right, all right. Well, the marketing of the thing is
I think we don't, well, I guess I would agree with Lori, maybe a, a, a more economical alternative on, you know, we've got kind of all over, so maybe not one of the top-end bands for that fourth one.
Oh, okay.
Just, I mean, just a thought.
Yeah.
I think we can get a, a good act for, you know, the thousand to fifteen hundred or whatever. Two thousand, but
And if you have trouble and need more help, just let me know. I mean, I can ask around again to, you know, um,
Well, I have another country band I talked to about
Okay.
coming here as well.
Because another country would be good, and Richard Hemphill knows music.
Yeah.
And he knows a lot, yeah, he knows a lot.
And he knows a lot of the connections, especially in Lawrence.
Bob Zendler, too.
So, yeah.
Well, the, that, he'll, what is the group he gets?
Because there's the, what's that one lady?
Hillbenders, the
There's one that had a lady that used to play all the time, Kathy.
She's been at, they've been at Wine Song.
And they missed it because of some kind of surgery or something. So she'd be a really a good one, too.
But there, yeah, Richard is a good resource.
Richard would be good to talk to.
For bands, yeah.
No, I have a cousin in Nebraska that's in a alternative Irish something kind of band.
Wow.
All right.
Did you, did you say the River, River Fest Concert Series?
River Fest Summer Concert Series, yeah, River Fest, and throw the summer in there, you know? And if we ever wanted to do a winter series or fall series and, you know? Yeah, ice fishing competition, polar, River Fest Polar Series.
I'd like to see it named that, too.
River Fest
Yeah.
Good.
Summer Concert Series.
Yeah.
River Fest Summer Concert Series.
City of DeSoto.
Well, very good.
Now we just need a logo.
Yeah.
Artist over there.
Okay. CIP Discussion.
CIP Discussion, yes, yes, council. We, we talked about some new projects at, at our last meeting. And I think I, I showed you these spreadsheets at the last discussion we had. So what I've done now is I've revised some of those spreadsheets. I've added some detail to some of these projects, the, the project detail sheets I've gone ahead and filled out. So if you want to, if you're unclear about a scope or whatever, I've tried to provide some narrative on, on those, the project, specifically for the new projects. Of course, our current, currently effective CIP is on our website. It has all the scopes and project cost estimates for all the existing ones that are, that are currently on the plan. Again, what I've done in terms of the exhibits, Exhibit A is kind of that CIP program schedule that we've had for more than a year now. Exhibit A represents the CIP program if we didn't add any new projects. With this one, I've taken out, we've removed some of those projects that we talked about last time. We, which ones did we take out? We took out the Hudamaki Entrance Drive. We took out the Traffic Signal at Ninety First Street in Lexington. And we took out the soccer fields. So those projects are just removed. We also removed, well, we reduced and delayed the Mark funding on the revenue side. So Exhibit A represents basically a do-nothing scenario. If we don't want to implement any more projects, just do nothing, Exhibit A would be our CIP. And I think the biggest conversation we need to have tonight, and it's probably not something we're going to be able to come to a resolution on, but just start thinking about, is the amount of debt that is represented by, by our aspirations here. If we stopped here where we are and, and did nothing, essentially, we'd be looking at three point four million dollars in new debt to implement what's on the list here. But we know, we have a list of other stuff that we want to do. So Exhibit B shows those projects that we, that, that we've talked about. And we, we talked about these at the last meeting. Roundabout at Ninety First Street in Lexington rather than the Traffic Signal. We talked about the Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec Master Plan referendum projects. That's, again, that's a placeholder. Got three million dollars in here as that placeholder. We talked about sewers out to Hundred and Third and Edgerton, some asbestos and safety upgrades here at City Hall. And then a Lexington Avenue pedestrian crossing kind of a plan. I've up, up that cost estimate there a little bit. You know, we talked about the existing pedestrian crossings, there are four of those, putting some signals on those, maybe some other sidewalk improvements leading up to and around that. If we were to implement all of that stuff in order to get, to get this all funded, we'd be looking at the new debt here that's, that's shown there on the second page of the staff report of eight point three million dollars. It's over the next, that'd be actually over the next four years. Three million of that is that placeholder Parks and Rec Bond Referendum issue. What I've done last couple of weeks is engaged Columbia Capital, our financial advisors, to update really the analysis that they did for us last year that's shown here. This is, this is our, our debt obligation, our debt service moving forward, you know, from eight, two thousand eighteen beyond, I think it goes out to twenty forty-five. The gray on here is our existing debt service payments. You see they, they fall off gradually over the next twelve years, fifteen years, and then they take a big dip. Columbia Capital's recommendation last year on three point four million is to structure that debt to take advantage of that dip in the out years. So our debt load per, on a yearly basis, would go up slightly for the next several and then begin to taper off. I've asked them to redo this analysis based on eight point three million dollars in debt. And to tell me, tell us basically what their recommendation would be in terms of overall debt load and bond rating and financial stability, moving forward, projecting out of our crystal ball as far as we possibly can. My, my, my suspicion is they're not going to come back and say, do whatever you want, you're good. I'm guessing they're going to say, they'll want to temper our expectations a little bit. And, and really, this kind of comes to a discussion and, and an idea I've had about getting the council together, maybe with the park board, to talk about this referendum issue. You know, that's just an idea that it's kind of floated, you know, by me, basically. I'm probably the only one I've heard it from, really. The idea of prioritizing those Parks and Recs things, bundling those into a Parks and Rec effort. And whether that is funded with existing funds or just regular geo-bonds, or whether that becomes an issue that you go out to the voters with, the scale of that issue is going to, going to depend largely on what our bond council says is advisable for us to do, financial advisors, and how that interplays with the other priorities in our CIP. We've got some big-ticket items, you know, there's a two point three million dollars public works facility in that CIP. There's a, you know, a million dollar roundabout in that CIP. There's some big-ticket items there. You know, again, I think we, when I show you the financial statements, I, I produced that year-end financial statement for two thousand and eighteen. We're looking at projections. Sales tax is looking good. We're growing. Property tax revenue is up. Expenses are remaining in check. We're not hurting. Financially, it's looking pretty rosy. It's a little easy to get blinders on in this sort of atmosphere when money is easy and things are going great. And just, we, we need that outside look to, to kind of, to, to guide us, I think, in this sort of situation. So, you know, I think there's, will be room to do some of this. I don't think we'll, it'll be advisable to do all of it. So I guess that's all I had, you know? I think we, we can talk, you know, about project specifics and, and expectations there a little bit tonight if you wish. So I'll, I'll kind of stop there and leave it to you guys.
The three million for the parks, was that almost everything in that list, or was that just the big-ticket items, or?
You know, I think that was the big tic, the biggest ticket item, and that's, that's an arbitrary number, Rob. But it would get, let me just go down to that. This is sort of that list. And these are the goal, remember, they separated into many, several goals. One is up, update and improve existing facilities. This is, goal one is the CIP part of that master plan. You see things in here like parking lots for fifty thousand, lighting for five, not big stuff until you get down here to implement phases of the River Fest Master Plan, three point three million. That's a big one. I think the one that's kind of on top of mind is the sports facilities. Where was that? Say it's somewhere around two, two million. And then we've got trails that we haven't really put a dollar figure to. You know, there's a desire to, to, to provide trails throughout the, the community. Why am I not finding?
It's that group, isn't it, right there?
I'm sorry.
Right, that group right there?
Okay, yeah, sports fields, two hundred and sixty-five, lighting thirty-two, diamond, another four hundred and twenty. So you have to seven hundred grand. I don't know, maybe it's not
You don't have an auxiliary gym on there either.
No auxiliary gym. I'm not sure about land acquisition there. You know, there's lots of add-ons that you could, you know, that could scope creep on that one's a danger. You know, but there's millions of dollars of stuff there, for sure. And the trail, again, the trails is one of the things, you know, they have that, that map that shows one going up Kill Creek Road and one going from River Fest out to Widow Big Knife. And they've got a lineal foot per trail item in there, but
And a little of that becomes, as we, if, as we start to position this with the public and get feedback, and as you start to see momentum building towards certain areas, then you know that to prioritize the funding for that, you know?
Yeah.
Trails versus sports. I, I think the sports fields are something that is going to rank pretty popular in public opinion right here.
Good for the master plan.
Yeah.
And there may be grants for trails or some things that you can look at. I mean, I know those aren't easy to get and do, but
But we need to think about competing for them.
Yeah, the things that we want to do, we need to start to, you know, like you said, be ready to look for it.
So when you're talking about doing this, getting this analysis, do we know, you know, I, I assume that this tail off really does never tail off, that you're always just kind of pushing that wave out there, right?
Unless you just don't do anything for fifteen years.
Yeah, but we'll have deferred maintenance on our existing infrastructure that'll eat that up anyway. So, so they're going to look at, I guess, how this can spread over time, but also what, what our bonding capacity is
Yeah, what the debt load
and give some feedback to that.
What the debt load is, yeah.
Not that we want to load debt up, but what do we, what is a comfortable debt load?
Right, so right now, we got, it's about eighteen point five million dollars in debt out there. And, and so debt service payments on that are about one point six million a year. That's where, that's those green bars.
That's those bars.
Or those gray bars. I don't know if that can go up to twenty-five or twenty-two. That's what
That's what the, the analysis will begin to show.
That's what the analysis will show, yeah.
And then how we could, how that can, that can time out.
Yeah.
The other comment I got is, you know, some of those items that are on the, the CIP plan are things, sewer extensions are things that support economic development opportunities as well. So, you know, those situations may present themselves earlier than we may be anticipating by how they're scheduled in the plan. So I think we also need to think about the flexibility of, if we have a situation arise, how can we fund that, that increment of it, you know, that one project, that one piece
Right.
in a way that we can support, you know, job growth opportunities, economic development opportunities? Because those won't be completely planned per se, you know? We can't say, well, that's a twenty twenty-one deal. That's going to be a twenty twenty-one deal there, but it's going to become really
It's going to deal break somewhere else.
Yeah, right. So how can we maintain the flexibility for those items that are, that are kind of economic development related? You know, recognizing that it could, you know, that there's another financial analysis that goes along with that. Increased property tax base and
Exactly, yeah. And then those, those benefit districts that we're counting on for part of that funding, those aren't going to trip off until that.
Yeah.
Well, they're figured in in the revenue side. So I'm figuring, like, for this, say, just for the Ninety Fifth and
You are lining them up with things like sewer extensions?
Yeah, yeah. So that sewer extension, I'm assuming, you know, a third of that project would be a benefit district. So that won't happen until the economic development triggers there. Maybe, I, the thought I had was, let's get those projects designed and let's get the easements acquired in the CIP. Do that soon.
Sooner.
You know, like next year, and then just put them on the shelf until that trigger happens.
So then kind of along where Lori was going, but for really any, any other funding that's out there, whether it's, you know, cars funding, Mark funding, CDBG money, whatever it may be, do we feel like we're being aggressive, as, as aggressive as we can be and as competitive as we can be for funding opportunities that, that do exist out there? You know, to go get some of these things done, like the roundabout or, or some of these bigger ticket items? Or trails under, you know, I don't know what, if they can qualify under the, the C-Mac
Transportation alternatives.
Yeah.
Mike, did we add in that property that was served by the other water district?
Clean air one.
C-Mac, C-Mac money.
Have we added that in here in place?
Lawrence had
Yeah, it's on the
You know, I'm just kind of thinking about the suite of all of these and making sure that we're going, okay, here's, here's our laundry list of find, of opportunities. Are we being as competitive as we can be? Because I think Mark just had some
Because that would be a really priority.
Something come out, the deadlines are coming up for project
Customer back into
Submittals.
Our facilities.
Um, not for a, not for a funding.
Not for funding?
It was for projects to get on the Transportation Twenty Fifty Plan.
Okay, but not
Well, that's coming up in March, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just to show
To show the range of what your
The bigger picture.
Yeah, yeah.
The project outliers that are out there. The fun, we missed the, I mean, that's the last round, and we were, we were close, actually, we were
Inches away.
Inches away, but our, yeah, we were three inches away from getting funding for our Ottawa Street Bridge project.
Yeah, right.
Because it was determined not to be a bridge.
Yeah. So the first step in that, getting, I mean, we can try real hard, and we do, and we have, and we will. The first step in getting it is getting community support for the pro, getting it on the CIP so we can show it's on our CIP, and then starting to have that community support behind it.
Yeah.
That's important. I mean, Mark doesn't, feds don't want to fund something that people don't want.
Yeah.
You know, they want to fund
The intersection.
Happy popular project.
Some people may not like roundabouts, but everybody's agreeing.
It's something, something, yeah.
You, you had cars on that, I don't even have that
Yeah, so
So you had that fifty percent cars, right?
Five hundred for cars.
Fifty percent of the construction. It doesn't turn out quite fifty percent. So cars for project, twenty, five hundred grand for that.
And that's, I don't know.
That's, that's almost automatic. I don't want, don't want them to hear me say that, but it really is. That's an easy one.
The, the roundabout one, yeah.
Set it on live and recorded stream. But the trails, I mean, the money, the, the current funding pool in the metropolitan area on the Kansas side, that trail money is so competitive, it's, it is.
Bald money.
For what?
500,000.
Trails?
For trail money.
Trail money.
Well, Lawrence had a trail done, and they used some grant money. Do you remember what that was? Remember Scott Wagner sent us that information on that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm trying to remember what it was, though. It was some flower or something.
Same program.
It was, but it's.
Lawrence is their own MPO, though.
Okay.
So, it's a different, we're competing with.
It's a different pool of money. We're competing with different ones. Well, we're just gonna compete harder. We're gonna let them know. They already got theirs. It's our turn. We'll keep working at it.
Oh, yeah.
And I know you guys are doing good. If you ever, you know, if there's anything more that we can do.
Yeah.
Sometimes it feel like, almost seems like we would be better outside the mark.
Well, that's the only way we got 95th Street Bridge funded. We did that on a statewide off-system bridge. It wasn't through Mark.
Yeah.
That's the only way that happened.
And I, I cry, I whine at him every time I'm down there, that, you know, remind him that, I don't think, I don't think we've ever gotten anything out of these Mark funding process. So, our, our last grant application for the trail study was rebuffed as well.
Yeah, we can't even get a PSP grant out of them.
Well, one of the things that we have on for, for 2020 that you have marked here for the Riverfest restrooms, I really think we need to go to the state. Parks and tourism with that, because they do, they're doing a lot of, they do have some funding that they do, and I wouldn't be surprised if we wouldn't get them to split that with us, being it's, it would be a permanent facility on the river, the national water river thing.
Waterways.
Waterways thing. So, I, I would think from conversations I've had with Don Buehler and the Friends of the Caw, and her, I'm trying to think of the guy's name. I think his name is Aaron now, because it's a different person than was on it a few years ago. But I think if we got a meeting with them, we might be able to get some.
Yeah, okay.
I would like to see us try to get some money out, them helping out on that one.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. We will. Yeah, so then, you know, that eight, that eight million in bond doesn't assume a lot of money falling from the sky.
Right, right.
We're pulling, you know, that's kind of, everything that isn't just almost guaranteed.
Well, as with anything, we're gonna have to really look at it and decide what is most important and which things we're.
Yeah.
Willing to realize our dreams and.
Yep.
Just an idea.
All right. Any other comments, questions?
Well, I just would like to make a comment that having this the way you do it, Mike, is really very helpful for us, and I think you do a great job with this, because, you know, it's not just, you know, it's all devised out and good planning, how you do the, you know, the planning one year, and then the implementation the next year, and how you've get the, the income coming from different possibilities, and not just, you know, you do, it's a really a good job, and I thank you for doing this, because it makes it a lot easier for us to look ahead when we see something in this kind of a format, so.
Easy to digest.
Good. Thanks. Well, I'm glad. I mean, I think one of the most important things I do is make your job easier and make your, you feel like you're not just coming here wasting your time, and you're making meaningful, providing meaningful leadership. So, it's important.
Okay.
Okay, good.
You good there?
Proceed. I'm, I'm hoping that February 21st meeting, we'll have Columbia Capitol here.
Oh, good.
If not, we'll have something from them.
All right. Executive session. We have two items on executive session, so we need to do two motions. We'll do one and then come back and do the other, okay?
And I put, attached to your staff, or the agenda, you have a suggested motion there.
Highly suggested to read it exactly how it says.
Yeah. Well, I think there's some blanks to fill in.
You just have to put your name. I state your name.
I can fill that in.
So, we'll.
How long?
I think the land acquisition is probably a seven-minute discussion. All right, eight-minute discussion.
All right, I make a motion, we go into.
And it's 8:15 now, by my.
10 minutes?
Eight minutes.
Eight minutes. Into executive session at 8:15 for eight minutes to discuss preliminary discussion of exchange of city real property for private real property pursuant to statutory land acquisition KSA 75-4319B6, with the open meeting resuming in the City Council Chamber at 8:23.
So, we're second.
Second. All right. Roll call.
Lane.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Hannah Michael.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right.
Guys, I'm gonna leave the video on, so, just so you know, you're staying in the room. Oh, I was just, Patrick and Brad are staying in the room, the video's gonna be on.
So, go ahead and sing and dance and entertain the folks out there.
Who seconded that motion on the?
Rob, actually was.
Kevin, did you second that when Lori?
No.
No.
You were first on the. I was first.
Lori made the motion, Rob seconded.
Okay.
Okay, there you go.
Yeah. Okay.
Poor Mrs. Mike.
Oh, no, you're fine.
We don't need him to make the next motion, though, do we?
No.
No, he's. Do we need to call ourselves back in order?
Huh?
I thought we didn't need to do that.
I just note for the minutes when you return.
So, please note for the minutes that we have returned at 8:23. If someone would like to make a motion for our next. Oh, we need to know how much time we need.
How much time on this one?
I don't think we need a lot.
20 minutes, 30 minutes?
15.
We're in a hammering.
15.
15 minutes, all right.
Mike, how long do we need on this one?
You want 15 minutes?
Well, that's more than money.
How about 10?
That's what I think.
Okay, 10?
10 minutes, and we can come back out if we need to.
Okay, I make a motion to recess into executive session at 8:25 for 10 minutes to discuss city administrator performance evaluation pursuant to statutory based non-elected personnel KSA 754319B1, with the open meeting resuming in the city council member at 8:35.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to second. Roll call, please.
Lane.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Hannah Michael.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I wasn't trying to be rude, it's, just trying to be official.
Will you please let the minutes reflect we've returned to regular session at 8:35? Thank you. All right, advisory reports.
Do we need to make a motion?
Oh, I don't care. Yeah, let's do that right now.
Make a motion. I'd like to make a motion on the, consider the, well, proceed with the increase in compensation back to June 15 for the city administrator representing the merit increase.
Should we rep, should we specify the amount?
Yeah.
3.5.
3.5.
3.5, yes.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Lane.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, now, Mike, advisory report.
Yeah, just a couple things, and actually, I was gonna, I might steal Brad's thunder, I don't know. Brad, we were gonna come to the council with recommendations for this year's street improvement projects, 400, and we got in the budget 470,000 dollars worth of basically resurfacing projects that we'll do. Some U-Bass, we're looking at, some crack ceiling and some other improvements. So, Brad's putting that together with Ron, and we'll be looking that over, having that at the next council meeting. And, I don't know if Mayor, did you want to mention anything about the park board? We've met again on, on Monday evening. It's a really good group, I think.
Yeah, it's going well.
Really good direction. They're anxious to start, you know, making, having some, implementing the master plan, essentially. We talked to them about policies relating to, we actually had a member of the public show up and voiced a concern about practice times for basketball teams, so.
We don't have enough gym space for our basketball program.
Yeah. So, they'll be looking into policies about how we utilize our gym space and designate practice times, and that, that also extends to baseball fields, too. We've had that discussion here in the council in the last couple of years. So, I think it's gonna be a really good group to provide that direction legitimacy toward those policies moving forward, and that'll also tie into the Parks and Rec, or the City Hall master plan that Brad and Jay put together, that they reported on here the last meeting. You know, that's gonna roll into some policy discussion as well with that board. So, just, you know, just happy about how it's coming together. Jay's really doing a good job in providing them information and making sure that they have what they need to make the right, make decisions.
Well, and Bill's had experience with bond issues from his role at school district, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Tap that.
Right. Good deal. And then, the mayor is gonna give the state of the city address at the chamber lunch. Is that?
On the 14th?
Yep. On the 14th, lunch here, it'll, it'll be held here in this room. So, come for that, state of the city. Good stuff.
When is that?
February 14th, a week from today.
Yeah. Lunchtime.
Luncheon, 11:30.
11:30, I think, 11:30 to 1 o'clock or 12:30, so, I'll probably talk, I'll go on about noon, I guess.
Yeah.
You're gonna go for about an hour and a half?
An hour?
Yeah, about, about 92 minutes. Is it a bow tie?
You can wear that sweater vest.
The last thing I wanted to mention is I met yesterday with Mike Bosch with RG Fiber and representatives from Duraline. And Duraline is a company that produces the conduit with the seven microconduits inside. They are very interested in our, in our case study, you know, how we solved our broadband issue, specifically with the angle of how Duraline made it all possible, but, which is, there's some truth to that. But also, you know, just the general concept, and they're, they're very excited. They want to get an article in a couple of trade publications, the Broadband, Broadband USA publication and some others, talk about it at some trade shows. Kevin, I was gonna ask you, did we ever hear back from our?
We haven't heard. I just asked this week if we got confirmed at the Broadband Community Summit.
Yeah, in, in Austin, right?
In Austin.
We were talking about going down there and being on a panel, representing.
Yeah, we've submitted a, a presentation, we just like a 45-minute session.
Yeah. So, that's, that's interesting. The biggest thing.
What's that? We're going nationwide.
We are, we are. Main thing I wanted to tell you about that is that, that Mike knows, the Duraline folks know, and they might be able to help us with the ribbon-cutting groundbreaking ceremony, you know, just from a logistical and funding standpoint. We're gonna do that outside, and we don't really want to do it when it's 12 degrees out, so I think we're gonna wait a couple of months before having that, having that event. So, that's, that's, those gears are still turning with the ribbon cutting on that.
Okay.
Yep. That was all the good news.
All right. Patrick?
Nothing for me, Mayor.
All right. Brad? Council comments. Danny, you wanna start us off?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Rob?
Uh, the public safety event took place with the Sheriff's Department EMS and Fire Department. Would like to have seen more residents there, but for those that were there, it went well. There was a good representation of agencies there, and our new deputy that's gonna be taking over was there as well, Deputy Huff, so. Huff, Rob Huff. Also, apparently it was one of the first times that the Sheriff's Department had a civilian sit on an interview board for a position like that, and they thought it went really well, and that there was good feedback both ways. So, having city representation there was nice on our part, and they enjoyed having it as well, so that was a positive. So.
Rob was a representative. Did, did everybody know that? That was Rob.
Yeah. So, RG Fiber and Zoom, it's ni, nice in competition. It's been interesting watching and hearing different things going on.
A little bit. I saw a little bit on Facebook today.
A little bit on Facebook, but unfortunately, well, unfortunately, that's not the first I've heard. I've heard some door-to-door flyers that are not necessarily the most accurate representation of what's going on in timeframes of things from one side, so, saying it's gonna be available before, well, and it's like, okay, wait, you can't say it's available until those five conduits are in. So, what you heard today is not the first that I've heard.
Hadn't heard the door-to-door stuff.
Yeah, so, apparently there might be some questionable representation here and there, at least from what I've heard. I've not experienced it firsthand, but then I'm.
Get your hands on any of those.
Yeah, but then I'm not South of K-10 right now either.
Oh, yeah.
So, that's it.
Okay. Lori?
I don't have any, Mayor, thank you.
Kevin?
No report.
No report. Darn it. There was one thing, I meant to mention it to the park board. The, through Mark, there's been a effort to remap the Oregon and Santa Fe trails through the metropolitan area, and so at the last Mark board meeting, this draft report was presented, and I, I'll send y'all a link so you can look at it. But the, the trail that they show actually bends, so it'd be the Oregon Trail, actually bends, it looks like, and crosses, I think it's Captain's Creek, it looks like to me in Widow Big Knife Park. So, I asked them why we weren't showing on, not Widow Big Knife, Wilderness Park. And so I asked them, you know, do you know, we have a park right there. I said, I think that you're showing this bend in the trail right here, the creek crossing right in our park. And they didn't, they did not know that we had, that we had a park out there, but I just wanted to make, make everybody aware of that, that, you can pull that Mark, go to Mark and.
Oh, I could.
Their trail.
They doing the California Trail, too?
Yeah, so this was the California Trail that they were showing through the metropolitan area, and then headed out toward Douglas County, and it's like, that's, we've got a park, I said, we've got a park right there.
We need to put a little sign there in our park.
Yeah, so it may change how we want. Yeah, so it may change how we want to program that park, you know, and.
And promote.
And promote it, right. And then I think we need to pressure them or ask them, you know, why aren't you including our park in this map?
Yeah.
It's not that, that's not that one. No, it's the Oregon, it's the Trails Retrasment Program or something. It's, I'll send everybody the link for it.
How's that park doing out there?
Um, you know, we we spent quite a bit of time and effort a couple of years ago sprucing it up. It's it's fine, I mean, it's not terribly busy.
But I mean, has it stopped the vandalism?
Yeah, I think it has, for the most part, it has.
The purpose of what we did to it has stopped what we did and what going on.
I think so.
It looks like Sunflower put a cell tower up right there.
Yeah, they did.
Said, that's not showing up on the.
On our property?
No, it's right next to it, right next to that driveway that goes back there, but that's on their property.
Been back there since we did all that.
Um, but I want to share that with everybody, but I wanted to make you aware of it as well because I asked Marlene to find out, have their consultant contact me or you to confirm that location and 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 to show our park on that map. And and then I chided them a little bit about, you know, not including us. We have the, you're showing the trail right through one of our facilities and you don't even consult with us. And you got everybody else in the county that you talked to, you know, it's just, it was just a little dig back at not being part of something, but not cool. I think that was it. I did want to make make mention of that. I don't think I have anything else, so I would, we'll wait on Mike to, yeah, that's, this is it.
Well, no, this is the same one I was on. Yeah, no, this is.
See, I don't, they don't, I don't think they even show that Widow Big Knife on here as a green trail.
Well.
Not Widow Big Knife, I keep saying that, Wilderness Park as a park.
Just it's.
That's shown, but that's just the other, that's just a base map.
Get to their map.
Yeah, you got, you pulled it up that.
What did you Google?
I just Googled Mark Trail Retrasment Program.
They spent a, did a great effort, spent a lot of time on it. And so the idea is then they're going to make an effort then to enhance these parks or emphasize, you know, the historical significance of the trails.
Go up.
Um, there's a.
There, those right there.
This one?
No, kind of right in the middle.
The middle.
Oh, here.
Down.
Down. Down, down, a little more, a little more, whoa, whoa, whoa. This. Yes?
Mm hmm.
Okay.
So it looks like we don't even run into other Kansas cities.
Yeah.
But that doesn't.
So you see where that thing bends right there, north of the Gardner Junction?
Yeah.
Right there at at Captain's, I think that's Captain's Creek. That bend point, in my estimation, is at Widow or Wilderness Park, just north of 135th Street crossing the creek.
Yeah, that's Captain Creek.
But they don't show the, they don't show the trails in this map, or the trail, the parks in this maps, or our parks, anyway. But I lined it up, so I just lined up 135th Street and it, you know, where it went straight through and then where it cut and then eyeballed kind of where I thought their trail was crossing. So that's 135th Street.
Halfway between there and.
Yeah, so it looked like it's maybe a strong quarter north of 135th and. I think we need to go out there and look for wagon ruts across the creek. Find that crossing point.
Is that where the boys were always building bridges across that creek?
Yeah. So that blue line that, that's like 135th right through there, right? Where are you at?
That's 127.
Oh, you weren't down, yeah.
Oh, here, here's Wilderness.
Yeah.
That's Wilderness.
So that was 135th and then you just got to kind of.
35th and 127th. Right? So 135th, 127th. Pretty close.
Ah, well. It's a fat line, too, so it has.
Still looking for buttons and dark buckles.
Support around Oregon, California.
So that's it. But it was interesting. So you might email Marlene or someone, ask her.
Yeah. Will do.
I'm done.
I'd like to make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
I was going to let you guys.
All in favor?
Hi.
Post, we are adjourned.